Okay, good morning, everybody. Today is Friday, December 1st. It's always good to be back in the Valley. Madam Clerk, we do not have a quorum at this time, but why don't we begin with the presentation portion of today's agenda? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Englander for our first presentation of the day. The floor is yours, Mr. Englander.
Thank you, I think I need the entire room.
That's okay.
All right. Look at this group. Colleagues, this is one of the coolest presentations I've ever had the opportunity to present. And, you know, we are all faced with the biggest moral dilemma and our challenge of our lifetime. And the homeless population here in Los Angeles is at record highs. It's affected men, women, and children. Those who have sacrificed and paid everything and have worn our nation's uniform. Those who are living in squalor conditions, looking for a meal, looking for help and hope. And the city, interestingly enough, under our mayor, came up with an opportunity that we tweaked a little bit. And he offered a beautification grant last year to clean streets that we could apply, or a community or a neighborhood could apply for some of the funds to beautify, maybe plant some trees, paint out some graffiti, clean up some weeds. One time, money. And it was actually a group of people headed by my chief of staff, Nicole Burnson, Don Larson, and many others I'm going to talk about in a moment, that got together and said, "How do we turn those dollars into something to impact and change a life?" And so from that, the Clean Streets, Clean Starts program was born. This was a pilot program that started in my office with the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission, the Northridge Sparkle Campaign, and now has become its own organization, Northridge Beautification Foundation. The Northridge South Neighborhood Council, the mayor's office, and the Board of Public Works, all involved. Last year, we applied for that grant to recruit homeless volunteers, to partner with local beautification entities, to provide job skills, mentorships, personal and professional development. And then, in return, not only did they receive a hand up, but they were paid with gift cards and meals, bus tokens, job materials, they were housed, cleaned, in terms of being sober. It changed lives. And then we saw the benefit in our communities as well. It was a collaboration with the city workforce, the beautification program for the Reseda Boulevard Great Streets. And during an eight-week program, during that pilot program, we had training and supervision, mentorship, counseling, and positive intervention, while working within a very structured, positive program. We had ten volunteers during the pilot phase of this program. Five that needed it, all achieved sobriety. They all received housing, and they all received job offers. So I want to thank you to Ralph's and Stay Green Landscaping, Goodwill Industries, for providing the job opportunities, to the people who have the biggest impediments to achieving full-time employment, and they're here today. Without these employers, this program wouldn't have been possible. The mayor awarded, in fact, the Clean Streets, Clean Starts Pilot Program with the Game Changer Award. And let me tell you, it was a game changer. In fact, in fact, today, the Northridge Beautification Foundation and the community that have taken over this program, they've just finished their fourth class, and they're here today. Since then, fifty people have received positive intervention, expanding to more neighborhood councils areas and throughout the San Fernando Valley. In fact, they are just launching in Councilmember Blumenfield's district. I want to thank you for that as well. In addition, our offices introduced a new partnership that we're forming out of this as well. Since they're off and running, we need to continuously try new things as well. And so I'm really excited to introduce the new partnership, the West Valley Alliance, the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission, and they'll be providing financial literacy classes, job training to homeless participants, graffiti and we debatement, landscaping, and that will be our neighborhood's first responders. But today, I'd like to ask everybody, really make this a call to volunteer. Our homeless issue is growing. We need the help of all of our nonprofit partnerships, our clergy, our faith-based organizations, our schools, synagogues, churches, mosques. It's got to be hands-on deck. And so I'm asking everybody to sign up and show up. Pick a day, a month, get involved, and make a difference. The group here today, this army behind me, has changed lives and continue to do so every day. I've never seen, and I've scoured, to look for a program like this. You know, it's remarkable, Nicole and I were on a conference call recently with a mayor in, it was Albuquerque, and he was telling us about his program and his successes, which is phenomenal. And then we started sharing our highlights. He wants to come out and visit. And, you know, you hear about all these programs rooting up throughout the country, but I've yet to find one, like the workers, the volunteers, the men and women they're helping, like these guys. It's just incredible. So I want to thank a few people that aren't here today, the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission, Wade Trimmer, the director, and a special thanks, and I've got to give a big shout-out to Jim Brown. Jim has been a homeless navigator. He goes out every day, he walks the streets, he toes behind him, a mobile shower that we crowdsourced, where we provide a hundred and four showers every day, a haircut, a hot meal, and clean clothes. And Jim has really been an inspiration and a critical piece of this program. The Northridge Beautification Foundation, Andrea Alvarado, Linda Dunham, Laura Rothborn, and Don Larson. Let's give them a round of applause. I want to especially thank Don. I first met Don, and I knew the day I met him, he was crazy. We were working on Greg Smith's campaign, his first election to city council, and we had this massive headquarters, and Don walks in and says, "I want to paint a mural inside the campaign office that is the length of this room that we're currently in right now." And we're going to get a lot of volunteers every day to come in, and it's going to inspire them, and it's going to be of the entire San Fernando Valley. And my first question to him was one word: "Why?" And he said, "Because it'll inspire people to come and volunteer, and they'll be part of something bigger than them, and they'll see it. And by the time the election comes, that day, the last stroke of paint will be put on the mural." And he did it. And we had hundreds of people. It spread, it was infectious. And when they weren't painting, then they were walking precincts and getting on the phone. And he was right. The stuff that he's done and worked with us on and partnered with the first great street on Reseda Boulevard, and then taken this program that we initiated to a whole new level. It's just inspiring, and he's a great partner. And Don, I can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Mitch.
Oh, thanks, brother. We, as a team, brought in the Northridge Southwest and East Neighborhood Councils, where they all participated and brought USC in, Goodwill, Joseph Taylor, Alex Martinez, who's not here, but I want to give a special shout-out, Stay Green has been deeply involved, Jorge, thank you so much, Magdalena, Ralph's, Mike and Maisha from Ralph's, that we could not have this program without their support. And thank you so much. And I want to really give a special shout-out to Nicole Burnson as well, because she helped, she says, "Don't recognize her." I got to tell you, the Great Street program was initially just to do a Great Street, her idea, to write the grants and provide the leadership and go for the Clean Streets, Clean Starts program, her idea, to bring in Don. That was just Don. Her idea. And it takes an army and a village to make a difference, and we've got one. So I've got special certificates for all you guys, but for me, I can't put it in print, I can't put it in writing. It just comes from the heart. I can't thank each one of you for making such a, enough, for making such a big difference.
Have you ever had this many people show up?
This is phenomenal. I'm touched, because you all know my life story, and I was homeless as a kid. And it was community programs, organizations, strangers, that made a difference. I wouldn't be standing here today if it weren't for the community of the San Fernando Valley. That's what these guys are doing. Making a difference. So my hat's off to all of you. I love you all for what you're doing. Continue. There's a lot of work to do, there's a lot of people that need help each and every day, but you guys are examples, so what can be done with a little faith, with a little inspiration, with a little unconditional love? And a lot of hard work. God bless you. Amen. So, Mr. President, thank you very much for giving me the honor and the privilege to bring them here today, just to tell you a little bit about what this incredible organization, what these people are doing to make a difference here in Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley. Thank you very much.
Mr. Englander, you can bring this group back daily. I mean, let's give them another round of applause. Thank you so very much.
So I'm going to bring all of you back there, because we're going to take some photos, but I want everybody in it, so we're going to go by the blue curtains over there. Absolutely. Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
So if I could get Mr. Blumenfield...
My colleagues, I have two presentations today. I want to welcome everyone here today for this special council presentation. In Tarzana, there is a special library called the Kenneth Jernigan Library for Blind Children, which ships its Braille-translated books and texts across the entire country. They offer the blind and viewing impaired children opportunities that they would not otherwise have. This past June, I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Kevin Worley, an advocate and program director for the Action Fund for the Blind and the Los Angeles Radio Reading Service for the Blind Celebration of Helen Keller's Birthday. We had a good time celebrating Helen Keller's birthday, and I got to really see what they do. And when I learned about all the amazing things happening in the Library for Blind Children, I wanted to learn more about their programs and learn how my staff and the city could be more helpful. The idea for establishing this library came from Gene Norris in the 1960s, who worked with blind people and saw the need of parents to teach their visually impaired children to read. Today, they have thousands of books and many dedicated volunteers and staff who make this library operational. On-site, they have a special machine which embosses Braille onto paper. They then, the books that they have are proofread and put together by Hazel Wetz. Thank you, Hazel, for making sure the language and the spelling is correct, for everything that this library prints up. It's incredibly important work, as I mentioned, that not only touches folks in Tarzana and the Valley and the city, but across this country. I also want to thank longtime volunteer Donna Johnson. Donna? Thank you, there she is, for being dedicated to such a fantastic cause, making sure people can read no matter what their visual ability is. And for this special place, this library is fueled by volunteers. And the volunteers make it possible, they make it thrive, and they've made it into the very special place that it is. There are fifteen people who work in the library, fourteen of whom are dedicated unpaid volunteers. I say they're unpaid from a financial perspective, but the work they do is incredibly gratifying. In addition to printing and shipping books, the library also hosts the Braille Enrichment Literacy Learning Camp during the summer. The library also sends books to teachers who have visually impaired students across the country. This not only teaches children to read, but it also begins to foster a sense of community in the library, which is vital for student development. The Twin Vision books refer to a process where on one page the book is in print, and on the other page, it's transcribed in Braille. This way, any combination of visually impaired or visually proficient parents and blind children can read together. In addition to the library, they also print calendars for the blind. I also want to take a moment to thank the director, Lucille Abazia, and program director Kevin, who I mentioned, and they work so hard to make this library what it is, to further its goals, and really to have a vision for the visually impaired. The importance of this library is increasing. About ten percent of the blind children these days are able to read Braille. It's only ten percent at this point. But the library has been sponsored by the American Action Fund for the Blind since its incarnation, covering the...
incarnation, covering the finances for one-page staff member, the director. But despite that, despite operating on a shoestring budget, they make big things happen throughout Tarzana, throughout the country. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank them and present them with a certificate. We have, describe what we have here. We have a big certificate by the city for the Twin Vision Kenneth Jernigan Library for the Blind. And we also have this certificate, Ken, if you want to feel it, this is in Braille. We have a nice Braille certificate as well, which is nice and it is signed, this one is signed by all of the members of the council and the mayor. I don't know, do we get, I don't think we have the Braille signatures. We have to work on how we do Braille signatures, but...
The library can get it done for you.
If anyone can do it, this library can make it happen. So let's give them all a big round of applause and we're going to give each of the volunteers a certificate.
Congratulations.
This one's for Hazel. You get one as well in Braille? This one specifically is for you Kevin.
Oh, well, that's for the library.
We have one for the library I gave you a moment ago and then this one is for Lucille. Great. And we have one for Donna. And we have one for everybody? If we don't, we're going to get one. So let's give them all a big round of applause. Thank you guys.
Thank you councilman.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Great. All right. Thank you very much. So we can go take a picture there?
Thank you very much.
And I'll be back to take a picture with you guys in a minute, but I have another presentation I want to bring up as well. Fran? There he is. Want to bring up Fran Piazza? Not to be confused with Mike Piazza, who is in the Baseball Hall of Fame.
I didn't make it this year.
Was that?
I didn't make it.
He didn't make it in the baseball hall, but we're going to put him in the LA City Hall of Fame because he's an amazing guy. And I wanted to take a moment to recognize Fran for his decades of work that has made this city, Los Angeles and especially Reseda, his neighborhood, a better place to live, work and play. Fran is a guy, he moved from Los Angeles, moved to Los Angeles from Connecticut back in 1986. He wised up, moved west. Shortly after that, in 1989, he began volunteering as an LAPD Reserve Officer. He spent time in various units, including Narcotics, Vice, Drunk Driving, Drunk Driver Team and several federal task forces. In 2006, he joined the LA DOT as a traffic officer and has worked assignments, including special events, the habitual violation, parking violation unit, Valley Bureau Abandoned Vehicle Unit. In short, he's been making the valley look a lot better by getting rid of a lot of the blight that we have out here. In 2012, he began attending several Neighborhood Council meetings throughout the San Fernando Valley. And he didn't just attend them, he saw an opportunity. And he said, "Hey," even though he serves the city every day in uniform, when he comes home at night after his job, he is another way he can serve the city and serve his community by participating in the Neighborhood Council. In 2013, he ran for a seat on the Reseda Neighborhood Council and was elected on his first attempt. He jumped in with both feet. He launched a food drive that collected nearly 1,200 pounds of food for local food banks. Shortly thereafter, he was unanimously elected by his colleagues as the vice chair of the Reseda Neighborhood Council. And he had a pretty amazing and productive tenure on Reseda Neighborhood Council. He's done amazing things. He's been part of our community. Fortunately, he was diagnosed with stage four cancer. And that would make most people, you know, stop in their tracks, but you can't stop this guy. He was diagnosed with cancer, but his dedication and commitment to serving the community just shone through. It wasn't uncommon to see him sitting in meetings with his chemo bag and his mask on at a Reseda Neighborhood Council meeting, so dedicated that he was there despite undergoing such an ordeal. He sat on the Reseda Neighborhood Council and several of its committees and despite all that, he only missed a handful of meetings. He had a much better attendance record than almost everybody else despite incredible challenges that he was dealing with. And in 2015, he had the vision to find a new home for the Reseda Neighborhood Council. They had a community space, they opened its doors in September of 2015 on the Sherman Way Corridor, and we made that part of my Reseda Rising Initiative. It's right next to some CRA property. They found this property, we were able to make it work, they decorated it and now it is sort of the ideal space for a Neighborhood Council and for a community. It's a place where not only is the Neighborhood Council meet, but it has become a center for the community. Many city departments engage with them, revitalized Reseda's core in the Commercial District. And the space is an old storefront and it's now, as I said, the cornerstone for incredible events. In 2015, he was elected by the board as the president of the Reseda Neighborhood Council. He held this position until 2017, when he had to resign due to continuing health conditions. But he has done incredible things and throughout his selfless dedication, he has impacted our communities in innumerable ways. And I wanted to bring him up today to recognize him on behalf of the entire city council. We want to salute you. Thank you for your impeccable leadership, both as a city employee, you know, as a person in uniform, serving us every day, but also as a volunteer leader. A volunteer leader who has gone above and beyond and taken a community that really needed to see that kind of leadership and shown it and brought so many people with you and revitalized an area and been a great partner with me. And I just, I am so grateful and wanted to thank you and give you this certificate. So please accept this small token of appreciation.
Thank you sir.
You want to say a few words? Fran wants to say a word or two.
You know, this is just a little bit of an example how everybody in this city can step up. Health issues have made me step back a little bit, but I'm not done in Reseda yet. There's still a lot more to be done. We've got a great streets initiative coming up and I'm going to continue working to make our community better. So hopefully this inspires other citizens out there to step up. No matter what you're faced with, you can still make a difference. Thanks for the opportunity.
Now, thank you sir. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. If you'd please call the roll.
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sudio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrow, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rue moves. Corretts seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Krikorian moves and Mr. Price seconds. Brings us where?
That brings council to items one through three and those are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items two and three have been submitted, posted and circulated for council's consideration, sir.
Okay, then let's call the roll on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next.
Items four through six are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, Mr. President. There are cards on all items, four through six.
Okay, let's hold those and continue.
That brings council to presentations, items called special or public comments, sir.
Well, this morning colleagues, I am proud to be joined by our friends at 20th Century Fox and the stars from the Silmar Independent Baseball League in my district. You know, it's no surprise that in the northeast San Fernando Valley, we have our share of stars, just like we have throughout the entire city of Los Angeles, because we are Hollywood. And so in my position, I was so fortunate in that one of the unique parts of this job is that we're afforded an opportunity to connect some of the production studios with our communities and make them far more connected than they've ever been before. And I want to thank my friends at 20th Century Fox for helping to do just that. They had engaged in a production called Pitch, a Fox drama series named, called Pitch, which was chronicling the fictional story of the first female baseball player in the major leagues. Unfortunately, because of the show going out of production, the studio had a number, a great deal of equipment that was very gently used, that we were then able to have donated and connected to the 7th District and the beneficiaries of that contribution was the members of the Silmar Independent Baseball League. And so I want to thank my friends at 20th Century Fox for their generosity and helping to make great use of these, of this equipment, because they have helped to create the best example of a public-private partnership that helps to forge and promote the achievement of female athletes. But we are also here today to celebrate the great accomplishments of the young women from the northeast San Fernando Valley at CIBL. I'm joined today by the members of our All-Star team that are comprised of local girls from Silmar, San Fernando and Pacoima, led by their coach Stephanie Boucher, who is also a teacher and softball coach at our local high school, Caesar Chavez High School. And during the regular season, these girls, these young ladies, trained for four days a week and played in 10 tournaments to prepare them for the state finals. The Silmar All-Stars dominated and took first place in six tournaments and second place in two others. These girls did not shy away from adversity. They lost a tournament to Fillmore, but then defeated them the following week and went on to win the Southern State Championship C-Division. And no surprise that they played 10 games in three days with weather up to 110-degree heat. And in the northeast San Fernando Valley, we train for that every summer, right? We know that weather very well. And these ladies are a demonstration and a reflection of the tenacity and the dedication that really resides in the 7th District. These victories allowed them to advance to the regional finals in San Diego, where they defeated teams from Sacramento, San Diego, Huntington Beach, Orange County, Riverside and beat Fillmore in the final game to capture the California State C-Division Championship. Their overall record for the summer was 47 to 5.
Let's give them a big round of applause. Congrats, young ladies.
So colleagues, with that, I just, again, I want to thank and I want to invite Stephanie Boucher to come up and say a few words and also my friend Elnie, who's here representing 20th Century Fox. But again, I want to thank you for joining me in honoring their great accomplishments, but more importantly, also to our partners at 20th Century Fox for helping to bring resources that are so valued in the community that has always struggled to get the kind of support that they need. And these ladies are reflective of the kind of great things that will come, continue to come from the northeast San Fernando Valley. So Stephanie, I'd like you to come up and say a few words.
Thank you. First off, I would like to thank Fox for their generous donation to our league. And I would like to thank the city councilwoman, Monica Rodriguez, for this recognition. It is a great honor. My favorite thing about coaching these girls this summer was that they got out on the field and just played the game to the best of their ability. They never overthought the situation at hand, they just got out on the field and competed. In times of adversity, they never once gave up and that is a life lesson this group has learned at a young age. Thank you again for giving me the opportunity to share their great accomplishments with you, with you all. Thank you.
Good morning, Councilwoman Wesson, esteemed members of the city council and guests. I'm Elnie Vanotim with Fox and it's our honor to be here today. Fox is a global portfolio of film and television studios, cable and broadcasting networks and content providers. Most importantly, we are one of the largest private employers in the city of Los Angeles. We believe that our long-term health as a business relies on our positive social impact on the communities we serve. When our show Pitch wrapped earlier this year, we were looking for a good home for the equipment that was used on the show. The Silmar Independent Baseball League was the perfect fit. Our contribution to CIBL marks nearly a year's worth of social impact efforts surrounding Pitch, reflecting the role that inspirational stories play in providing the motivation and encouragement necessary for young athletes to succeed. The message of the show was this: Dream big because you are capable of anything. Congratulations to CIBL for training 450 young athletes just this past season alone in the fundamentals of baseball and softball, as well as the values of sportsmanship and teamwork. Your hard work and perseverance is reflected in the multiple division title victories this year. Last but certainly not least, thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez, for connecting us with such a wonderful organization in your district.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you colleagues. So we have, we have a few certificates here. Stephanie, I'd like you to, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, like to present you with the certificate accommodation and congratulations and also to our friends at 20th Century Fox for your contribution. Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez, why don't you let us hear from one of the players?
Yes.
Let us, let us hear from one of the players. Which one of you guys is going to be brave enough to come in?
There we go.
We got a winner. Yes ma'am.
That's right. There we go. So say your name and...
Hi. Hi, my name is Kaylee Duran. I am the pitcher for Silmar All-Stars.
Hi, my name is Jessica Ramos and I am the catcher.
Pitcher and catcher, all right.
Hi, my name is Mandy Figueroa and I am the shortstop.
All right.
I'm Viviana Viasenor and I'm the third baseman.
All right.
I'm Amaya Cooney. I'm the left fielder.
You guys didn't bring the second baseman? That was my position as a kid.
Some of them had to be at school today. We had tried to schedule this much earlier, but you know, getting all them, getting all the calendars coordinated.
Will somebody give my best to the second baseman? All right. Anyway, congratulations, young ladies. Let's give them another round of applause. Mr. Spindler, I know that's you disrupting. You do it again, you'll be asked to leave. Take some public comment. If I could get Sean. Sean Murphy's here. Sean, you've got items nine and item six and public comment. Good to see you, Sean.
Good to see you. Item number nine, I'm supporting item number nine. And what was the other item?
I think six.
Item number six, I'm not supporting. General public comment?
Go ahead.
Ah, the Hollywood Christmas Parade used to be a great, the Hollywood Chamber, remember the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce? They ran the parade. The last couple of years, I have not been satisfied with the Hollywood Christmas Parade. How dare you wait for an hour and a half? How dare they let us wait an hour and a half? I've been going to the parade since 91. You can't bring the parade back and get rid of the concerts, then I ain't going no more.
Mr. Previn, are you still here? Mr. Previn? Items four, five and six and then general public comment? Mr. Previn?
Thank you, sir. Are you not accepting comments on item number two today? The benefit for the...
Public hearing was already held, Mr. Previn.
Already satisfied up in committee, sir?
Mr. Previn?
Yes. Okay, fine. Thank you. Well, okay, that's a disappointment, but I'll talk about that in general maybe. But for item number four, we're providing about 430-something thousand dollars to the Thai, it's through the EWDD and it's for the Thai Town Marketplace Program. Now, they have been receiving some money for a number of years. This is a group that's well-regarded by institutional folks. This is a group that's well-regarded by institutional folks like Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Yaroslavsky. Now, I assume Kewell is right in there. We didn't see David Rue in there, but his predecessor, Labange. Many of the politicians will support this group. It's in East Hollywood, it's near Red Line, so this is a good area. And the whole idea is not bad because it's about providing healthy, fresh vegetables on an interim basis in the courtyard of a place that's already been LEED certified. I mean, this is a great spot to put money. And we're handing it directly to the Thai development, I forget what they're called. But they don't just represent Thai individuals, it's also for Armenian and Latino groups in the area. And I don't, I don't really have a problem, other than it's not clear how the money, uh, is being spent specifically. And, you know, there's a lot of treasured partners up in there. Item number, uh, fi- five today is, uh, your, your, the street vendor was murdered terribly years ago in 2009, and now the $50,000 reward to help find the guy has been, uh, it's, we're extending it now. And that costs 1,800 bucks. And there was a woman and her three kids who lost their husband in this. And we should give the money to the families and somebody go on KTLA and say, "We're looking for this guy," and put up a picture. Because in this particular item, there's not even a location where the incident happened. So we're just, we're firing off in weird directions, in my opinion. No disrespect to the LA Times, David Zahnizer wrote an excellent piece on, uh, the giant project for the 1,152-unit hotel opposite LA Live. But I'll go back to item number six now, sir, which is, uh, thank you to Weezer because what, talking about public benefit, it's one public benefit to get a $67 million or, if you believe Zahnizer, $100 million credit. But Weezer is providing for the farmer's market a $2,700, uh, he's actually going to charge the farmer's market $2,700. It's a $53 a day, uh, session cleanup fee. And he's doing it for the last year, so this is all retroactive, just like the deal for, uh, the big hotel.
Come on, Mr. Previn.
Which will be a, by the way, what are you talking about? I'm right on point.
No, come on, Mr. Previn.
It's a farmer's market. What do you mean, "Come on, Mr. Previn"? Mr. Previn's talking about, is it not a farmer's market?
Now, Mr. Previn keeps switching back and forth, is what Mr. Previn keeps doing. Would you give him his minute, and then you can say what you want to say, Mr. Previn?
Okay, it's Eric Previn. I'd just like to thank James Rabe, R-A-B-E, from Kaiser Marston Associates. Uh, and it's important to acknowledge as well, Downtown Live LLC, and certainly Marriott, uh, the Moxie Hotel, and the Hilton Garden Inn. These guys are going to receive an enormous subsidy from the city while we have, uh, significant problems. But we are, rather than adding immediately some kind of linkage fee to help with our problems, we're going to incentivize these guys because it's very hard to put up a tall building opposite a giant revenue center, uh, without a lot of taxpayer funds. And the TOT, Transit Occupancy Tax, is one important component, but it's not the only component. We're going to find lots of different ways, and there will be, uh, about 1,100 jobs in an 1,100-person hotel. So, you know, how many of those jobs will be Maria Elena Durazo's purview and fighting for their rights to be heard and get reasonable wages? We don't know. But we do know that we do need more hotels because we've been told. But we thought there was Metro connecting the little cities that have hotels that would make it easier.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Okay, well, good luck.
So if I can get Mr. Herman, and Mr. Herman has items four, five, and six, and then general public comment. Mr. Herman, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chair and fellow constituents of the valley, we've heard that at the market, which is called the City Hall Farmer's Market, it shouldn't be suggested as just Farmer's Market, so that anyone and everyone is welcome, like the rest of you that are left here? This way, we can see how the reimbursement of $2,700 is adequately spent by the scumbag politician Jose Weezer. That's number six. And then I go into motion five regarding Sidio and Mr. Price with no tie over there, and this deals with relative, what? Reinstating of a reward? Well, how many offers have you paid out but the one by Mr. Corretts? Shout out, thank you, Mr. Corretts, for doing a good job. When you do a good job, we praise you. But when you're a scumbag and you just keep offering $50,000 for people's lives, is that all a life matters? Is that all? I want someone to tell me that. I want to see your true colors right now. Tell me what that means because, see, I wear red to signify the blood of all the people murdered in Los Angeles. All the people that you allowed our police captain to open up his medical marijuana, oh, I'm sorry, off topic, let me go back, dealing with council subject for approval of the mayor. And then going again into the last item four by bitch O'Farrell for fucking relative, fucking authorizing, sorry, John, but I have to do it. See, this is 42 USC, 1983, my civil liberty and my right to say that. And in connection to the fucking workforce, workplace development, this is what happens when you're deprived of sleep, you can't even say a fucking word, right, to negotiate and execute a contact with the Thai community development. I don't even think Rue cares about the Thai community because it's not even his area. It's in Mitch O'Farrell. And Mitch O'Farrell, the racist bitch, is, oh, I'm sorry, he is here, for the record. So in statement to that, in my closing 27 seconds, EWDD designate fuck negotiate and fuck to execute a fucking contract, I wave back those 18 seconds, I wish to speak in general public comment. So now you see I'm here to express my deepest concern about sexual misconduct. I wish that Jose Weezer would step down from his position in his sexual misconduct with Francine Godoy and also the Alhambra incident at the massage parlor. Bonin is experienced with drugs and cockadoodledoo and no necktie, the biggest price of ever. Wear your tie, Price. And then in addition to that, with those white shoes, let me say it for the record again, Jose Weezer must quit immediately for the actions of sexual misconduct. He worked for LAUSD, Norrie Martinez worked for LSD, for fucking God's sake. What the fuck's going on with LA and LAUSD? And children shouldn't be fucked by the Police Department, LAPD. Stop your fucking nonsense, Sacramento. Stop it now.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I want to go to Mr. Englander and then Mr. Corretts.
Yeah. Um, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to, uh, I know that, that somebody is going to announce that we have some special guests here, but I also, before that happens, wanted to thank you all, including our special guests, and particularly those who have never been to a city council meeting here in Los Angeles before. Uh, welcome to the First Amendment, welcome to the freedom of speech, and, um, you know, it's, it's what our soldiers went to war for. It's what many have sacrificed and paid the ultimate price for. Um, and so, as much as, uh, we don't have the opportunity to even suggest some types of rules of decorum, uh, people do have the opportunity to speak out during their time of public comment. And, uh, more importantly, the voices of the public that are able to come here, we, we invite them and want them to participate. And so, I want to thank you all that haven't been here before and, uh, also that haven't been exposed perhaps at, to that degree. So thanks for being here and thanks for your patience.
Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Obviously, people that are testifying at the podium have, uh, the right to free speech. People in the audience don't have the right to be shouting out and talking and disrupting. And Mr. Spindler spoke through, uh, the last two speakers' entire testimony, and I'd like to ask that we address that.
Okay, and that I shall do. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Englander, for that. Um, I think that oftentimes, people who are new to our council chambers and even people who actually view us on TV are shocked and appalled by the way some adults behave, um, in this very setting, and I'm often embarrassed...
Sit down, Mr. Uh...
Mr. Herman, put your hand down. I'm not speaking to you. And I'm often embarrassed that my own daughter can't even watch our city council meetings because of the behavior of some of these gentlemen. So I rise, uh, colleagues, to introduce a wonderful group who's here, uh, with us this morning from Will Rogers High School. Can you please stand up from Van Nuys in my district? Please stand and be recognized. Thank you very much for being here this morning. I want to recognize my sister-in-law, Elva McHale, who brought them here this morning, and the other teacher, Armando Campos, are you here? Thank you very much, educators, for exposing our young people to our local government and the, and the importance of being involved in, uh, local politics and the need for you to be exposed to government because you're going to be leaders. You are in your own right, but in the future, we're looking to you to lead us, um, in, in a better way. So thank you very much again for, for being here and enduring some of the stuff that you just heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyways, give the young people another round of applause. Thank you all for coming. Okay, I want to, uh, get, uh, Maria Flores. Uh, this is for public comment. Uh, is it Abraham Zava? And, uh, Mr. Gus? Yes?
Okay. Uh, good morning. My name is Maria Flores. Um, my day job is I work as an art instructor and educator in Echo Park. Um, I'm a community organizer in Council District Nine. I'm a volunteer, I have been a volunteer with the Street Vendor Movement for the past year or so, and I'm here in solidarity with, uh, San Fernando Valley, uh, street vendors. I've held a position in our neighborhood council. Um, I'm heavily involved in my community, and I would specifically like to thank Council Member Karen Price for, um, his support in, in our, in my community. And in particular, thank you. And in particular, um, his staff, Jose Ugarte, who, while he has been on leave, he has been vital in connecting us with City Nine resources, so thank you very much. Uh, specifically in a street vendor community cleanup that we had. And I'm excited to see the policy, um, in this, uh, particular district move forward, taking into account the street vendor concerns. I'm excited to see how local politicians will advocate for some of our most marginalized communities, such as working-class women in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could get Abraham, Mr. Gus, and then Candido. Yes, sir?
Sure. How's it going? Good morning, folks. Uh, my name is Abraham Zavala. I am an organizer with the LA Street Vendor Campaign. Um, I want to begin by thanking the council and their support for the sidewalk vending policy and the progress it's had. I, like many of you, believe we can, uh, work together on creating a permit policy that's fair for residents, businesses, and vendors alike across the city. All food vendors will have to pass health regulations, as you all know. Um, areas of high concentration of vendors, uh, will have to work with council members, with public safety advocates, folks who are involved with pedestrian traffic and are the experts with these issues, to create special districts. And simply put, areas where people worry about a perceived explosion of vending, uh, you know, for example, eloteros like Benjamín Ramírez, they won't have eloters in areas, right? If the consumer market isn't there, vendors won't go and sell there. Um, with that said, uh, the LA Street Vendor Campaign really hopes that the council agrees on a permit that allows for cost recovery. If we begin to create layer upon layer of restrictions or opt-out amendments, we create invisible walls for vendors that are based on vague and subjective criterias, um, that make it inaccessible. We want a program that will succeed, and hopefully we could find a compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, Abraham, and thank you for asking how we were doing. Mr. Gus?
Mr. Wesson, I'd like to remind the City Council that this vulgarity was nonexistent when Eric Garcetti was president. There is a direct correlation between Herb Wesson cutting speaker time in less than half and an elevation of all of the vulgarity. There is a direct correlation between Herb's Gestapo-like tactics, Mr. Fabel, his predecessor, go watch how many times the F-bomb was dropped when Eric Garcetti was council president. It was nonexistent. That said, it's December, Mayor Garcetti said we'd be no-kill by now, and if he dares to claim that this city is no-kill, the 90-plus-page report that Mr. Wesson asked me to write on January 3rd, 2014, and said, "Dan, don't put my name on it," the moment the city claims it's no-kill, this goes live online. If you tell the city that it's no-kill, people are going to stop adopting animals, they're going to start dropping in more animals. It's a bell you cannot unring.
Okay, Candido? And, uh, Sheri Derahania? Yes?
Mr. President, I signed up for two items, but go, uh, first of all, thank you. I'm, uh, proud to be represented by Mr. Mitch Englander. Uh, I want to thank the City Council and especially Ms. Martinez and Mr. Kocorian for the actions that were taken for, uh, sexual assault. But let's talk about the, and not ignore the assaults that are taking place right here in this community. Right down the street, uh, just a few weeks ago, there was a young man, 15-year-old, and his sister, who wanted to move their sis, uh, mother's car, and he was cut from throat to, to ear with a 16-inch, uh, blade by a so-called neighborhood councilman, uh, excuse me, uh, neighborhood watch guy. And then we had a neighborhood, uh, councilman from the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council who took a bottle like this, a frozen bottle like this, which weighs approximately, uh, one pound, and hit a young person on the back of the head. He says, "Oops, I didn't hit you that hard." He then positioned the, the American flag so it would fall on another board member. Thank God, Captain Brockway, he's a new captain here, stated that they are investigating it. You cannot get away with assault in this city, and I hope that this council continues to protect...
Thank you, Candido. And you signed up on an item where the public comment has already been satisfied.
All right. Thanks for...
That's what happened. So if I can get Sheri, followed by Miriam? Yes, ma'am?
Good morning. My name is Sheri Derahanian. This is my first city council meeting. I took the day off work because I live in Granada Hills. And I want to thank, first off, Mitch Englander. I was so happy that you didn't get the county supervisor because I think you're better used to our north valley. Thank you. And I was on the Porter Ranch Neighborhood Council for three years during the FUN event, and I learned a lot about government. I didn't even used to know who the lieutenant governor is until I met him through the gas leak. But I invite, I invite you today to take a second look, my comments on that, um, item number one, the public safety report resolution, Prop 47. Um, I come from a background in mental health. My father was a psychiatrist for the, uh, chief psychiatrist for the prison system. My mother was a sociologist, and I'm a claim suggester, so even though I'm not in that area, but I grew up with that. I think that the mental health is light. You need to double the mental health and take away from the other parts. Mental health is key. It's more important than anything else on that bill.
Thank you. Thank you. So if I can get Miriam and Donna?
I got, uh, two items besides public comment, and I'm already, the clock is already ticking.
Miriam, I have you. You have one card, so you have your minute. Go ahead.
I also put in for another card for number five. Okay, so I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and, uh, Happy New Year. I'm here concerning this, uh, Kate Styling thing too, because, uh, that's important. Uh, because this is a meeting of our, of our whole world, the human race. If we don't stop the murders and all that, and you allow people to get off like this because they're illegally here, and you give them sanctuary to go ahead and murder people, you're, you're, what you're doing is you're, you're violating the First Commandment, thou shall not murder. Okay? Uh, bring back video conferencing, $800 a month, that's all it costs. Okay? Um, we don't want light rail here in the San Fernando Valley. They take away parking, and they can start get us out of our cars, that's your whole plan? So you can control the people so they can't carry, can't carry anything.
Thanks, Miriam. Let me get, let me get Donna, and I'll call you back on the other items, but Donna, come on. Donna, 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 come on. Miriam, I'll call you back. Your time on this issue is over. Come on, Donna.
Englander, why don't you care about the disabled in the valley who wish to speak to city council? Reopen video conferencing, like all these potential people in the valley that needs to speak to city council, uh, that, that needs video conferencing? If you open it and tell them they will come. Every other month in Van Nuys is not good enough. We don't need a light rail on Van Nuys Boulevard. It will ruin Van Nuys business, business districts with no parking, no parking for disabled. It's against the disability law. Make it hard for them to go to businesses and restaurants on Van Nuys Boulevard without a long trek. If you find it at all, small businesses and restaurants will close, like the ones near Browdy is in eyesore in Van Nuys. I'm telling you, we don't need a light rail, and we need to have video conferencing in Van Nuys. This is wrong what you do it every other month. Luckily, I remembered the last moment to look at December, otherwise it would be another month, and then again, it would be two months more. Wrong.
Thank you. Thank you. So if I can get Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, you have items four, five, and six, and then you have your general public comment.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential. Thai Town? Well, I live right next door to what used to be Thai Town. There are very few, they've escaped, they've gone to the valley. Go and, and look at all the empty Thai stores that are there. Go and, and look at all the empty Thai stores that are there. They were there in the eighties when, uh, in the seventies, eighties, and nineties. They did the smart thing and got out of Thai Town. That's adjacent to Hollywood. Re-estating the reward offer, the death of Cosme Gonzalez. One person has applied for, uh, a reward, and you fought them. You fought them. It was in the agenda. I'm telling you right now, uh, that what's happening in Hollywood is the reward offers, it's a death sentence. If you ask for a reward, and these are all gang killings, what happens is you're threatened or you're killed. Because it isn't, uh, the mayor who runs this city. He's outrunning for president. It's the gangs that run this city, and they run the Times, which is afraid to even mention the names of the gangs, although the national press does mention the names of the gangs. And, uh, now, uh, City Hall Farmer's Market? The farmer's market, I don't know what, what's happening here. It's encroaching the City Hall, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM for these few weeks. Well, I would like to know, not that you're interested, what this farmer's market wants to do, uh, next to City Hall? And I'm telling you right now that the reward off on the death of Cosme Gonzalez, $50,000, $100,000, $1 million? It doesn't matter. How much is your life worth? And, uh, let's go now. You can, uh, swallow the other time, and we'll go into my, uh, public com, uh, general public comment. Okay, the Bonin recall is going. You can sit here and they'll smirk at you. You can curse at them, it means nothing. And incidentally, we won with Judge Peregson's son as the federal judge, and we, uh, with Zuma Dog, who, who asked for free speech here, and the city actually hired a lawyer to fight us. So everything you, when you hear the word fuck, it's not because of their liberalism. You hear the word fuck because we won it from Judge Peregson, whose father, who was a federal judge, passed away the other day. And he's the, uh, he's the man who came up and shook my hand while I was speaking on the public comment. He was, the elder Judge Peregson was, uh, was in his eighties when he died. And so I'm telling you right now, billion dollars over budget, red line.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Walsh. Okay, Mr. Spindler, items four, five, and six, and general public comment.
All right, and thank you for starting my time prematurely early. So we're going to item number six, and we're on blackout today. It's a very dark day. From 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, from last year, July 2016 to June 2017, you are asking for retroactive funding for something that already happened a year ago plus, on number six. So either you have the wrong date, or it's because CD14 is ran by a retard who doesn't understand that it was last year. So how do you retroactively grant a city farmer's market to have the right to use public spaces to exclude the elderly and the disabled? That is illegal and that violates federal and state law. But Jose Wezar doesn't care about any of that shit, does he? No. And now we turn to item five. Item five involved the death of Cosme Gonzalez in 2010. The city still is putting out a reward. Why? Because they pay the Watts Times and Danny Bakewell money to run those articles to help subsidize the newspapers under the false flag of trying to catch a murderer that they already know who it is. Because this person was assassinated by somebody at the LAPD that wanted him dead. Obviously, otherwise, they would not be doing a reward, right? Of course. That's what young people need to understand. And then we have item number four, the Thai Town. And my colleague will take that over.
Yes, thank you. The Thai people eat too much fucking pork. And on behalf of all my fellow pigs, we're glad that the Thai community moved out and they moved to San Gabriel Valley. Go around, every fucking place at the Thai. Pigs, pigs, pigs being roasted, pigs heads, pigs feet. It's horrible. It's a poor colossus, and I am very opposed to item number four.
Mr. Spindler, get back on topic. Just get back on topic.
Get back on topic.
Yes, but I do not approve of the Thai Town marketplace because they interfere with too much meat products. Fuck this item. I do not want this fucking item on number fucking four. You son of a bitches, no item four.
Okay, you have one minute.
So obviously, there's city council people who have a disagreement with me being here at your meetings. How many people want me to stop going to these meetings? Raise your hands and stand up and be counted. You have the power to do that. Simply settle my federal civil rights lawsuit and terminate my illegal temporary restraining order, and you'll never see me here again. It's extremely simple, just like basketball, where you buy out a contract on a player that continues to become hurt. A liability to the team. Perhaps I'm a liability that needs to be paid his insurance premium to leave the team. But as long as I'm here, I will continue to shoot 20% and fuck this city.
Miriam and Donna on item five. On item five, Miriam, on item five, Donna. Come on.
So who's the one that turned off the...
Come on, no, just come on. Come on, Miriam.
Who's the one that did it because I didn't back him, backing for mayor?
Give one minute.
Okay, this gentleman, this gentleman didn't get a fair deal, just like, uh, Kate Stanley. You people don't care about the victims. All you care about is yourselves and the sanctuary city that you're giving all to these people so they can go out and keep doing these heinous crimes. So I just want to let you know that, uh, um, I left my paper back there. The, again, I'm going to tell you, if you don't enforce the laws that God has given us, you're going to be punished by the law. Okay? You will die. If you don't live by the law, you will die by the law. That's what God said. Okay? And, uh, if any of, any, even if nobody believes in God, you're, it's going to happen. Okay? Because it's just the way it is. All right? And we got to enforce the death penalty.
Now, Ms. Fogel, you got to get on the topic now.
Okay, this gentleman has been waiting since 2010 to finally get justice. When is it going to ever happen?
Thank you. Thank you. Donna, come on. Come on.
Look at that, $50,000 reward for the death of Cosmo Gonzalez, not murder of Cosmo Gonzalez. Shows we're not taking murder seriously. We need to be able to arm and protect ourselves with, with the police hands tied. They can't protect us. Also, has anyone ever gave information to find the murderers? You can extend and extend and extend it, but it still won't work. No one wants to be murdered after giving information by the murderer's friends. So basically, what we got here is we won't, this won't work. People, uh, people just have to go and protect themselves because certainly, giving out little rewards, people will run and say, "Oh, I'm going to get 50,000, I want to get 50,000, I'm going to get 35,000," and then have myself find, uh, I, my wife, my children will be murdered. Yeah, right. It's not going to happen. We need to protect ourselves, we need to arm ourselves, and we need to have video conferencing open again.
Thank you. Thank you. So that concludes, uh, general public comment, multi-comment. So, Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
That brings council to vote on items four, five, and six, sir.
Can we take those three items together?
Yes, sir.
Let's do that. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Okay, Madam, uh, Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, forthwith on item four, please.
Okay, without objection. So ordered. Madam Clerk, what's before this body?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted, they are referred. Announcements, members? Seeing no announcements, can we rise? Rise, are there, are there any adjourning motions? Mr. Bloomingfield?
Thank you. Uh, today I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Terry Alpert, uh, the brother of, of my friend Lee Alpert. Uh, Terry died at the age of 65 in West Bloomfield, Michigan. A lot of you probably know his brother Lee. He's a very active, uh, person here in the San Fernando Valley and throughout the city. His brother Terry was born in 1952 to Rogie and Simon Alpert. He loved anything to do with family and ran a family-owned, um, business called Admiral Auto Parts. He then worked with Federal Mogul for many years and also showed, uh, owned the Asset Recovery Services, which was an auto supply business. He was an active participant in his temple, Temple Shere Shalom, where he helped organize temple functions. He participated in the temple's brotherhood activities and was also a member of Bene Brith and its bowling leagues. Most importantly, Terry was the beloved husband to Eileen, uh, for over 38 years. He was a devoted father to Sharon and Carly, brother to Lee, treasured uncle to a handful of nieces and nephews, pet parent to his beloved dog Dakota, loyal friend to many. Uh, he died too young, and may he rest in peace.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, it is with deep sorrow that I ask that we adjourn in, in the, in the memory of Mrs. Anusha Razi. Mrs. Razi bravely battled cancer with dignity and grace, and she, along with her beloved husband Ali Razi, were the pioneering founders of the Farhang Foundation, a nonprofit that promotes Iranian art and culture for the benefit of the community at large. She was one of the most influential figures responsible for Farhang Foundation's success and a leading member of their Fine Arts Council and their Nouruas Committee. The city of Los Angeles and the Fifth District owe a debt of gratitude to the great work of the Farhang Foundation. This year alone, my district has received the Farhang Freedom Statue, inspired by the Cyrus Cylinder, which is located at the corner of Santa Monica Boulevard and Century, Century Park East, uh, being called the Statue of Liberty of the West by many. We are also grateful recipients of the Humanity mural, one of the Farhang murals in the Palms area. With the passing of Mrs. Razi, the city of Los Angeles lost one of its most gracious and caring citizens. Through her many philanthropic activities, Mrs. Razi tirelessly worked on initiatives to make our communities better custodians of art and culture. Equally significant, uh, her, uh, ever-present engagement in the work of the Midnight Mission to help less fortunate Angelinos will long be remembered and cherished. Her legacy will live on, and we are eternally grateful for all that she's done for our community. She is survived by her husband Ali, three children, Babak, Nilufar, and Kayvan, as well as her four grandchildren, William, Christopher, Noshin, and Havana, and she will be greatly missed.
Thank you. Are there, I'm getting, I'm looking to my right anymore, adjourning motions, uh, anymore to the left. I don't see any members. This meeting is adjourned.